Hello and welcome to the broadcast. Today is March 25th, 2024. Today, we are airing council countdown. I'm Chloe G. and I'm here with our Public Information Officer Hannah Nichols. And we are gearing up right now for the county council meeting. And as you can see from the screens, there is a lot of people here and this is going to be a big one. So Hannah, would you be able to give us a little bit more about what we can expect?
Of course. Thank you so much for having me on, Chloe. There is a lot on tonight's agenda and we have a full house tonight, so we're very excited. So tonight, on county council's agenda, we've got a wide variety of topics. We're going to hear on the long awaited investigations by Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd. And we're going to receive a statement from Council Chairman Joe Passamit, as well as interim County Administrator John Robinson. Notably, we also have on the agenda tonight two items relating to amendments regarding county code taxation. And we'll also hear whether or not county council is going to approve the procurement of the Beaufort County Green Space Program's Gregory Neck.
Yeah, as we can see, this is going to be a very, very popular meeting. People are trying to squeeze in here and trying to make room. Just do your best to ignore it and I think it'll be okay, but-
It's fine. I love a room that's standing room only. It's where we all perform our best.
So what is it that's bringing out this many people here this evening?
So I believe the majority of citizens are here tonight to talk against a portion of road called 5B in Bluffton. It is being proposed as part of a study tonight because it's part of a Low Country Area Transportation Study. I believe they are all going to try to talk during citizen comment. As you know, citizen comment lasts for 15 minutes for agenda items and 15 minutes for non-agenda items. So I'm interested to see the viewpoints that are raised tonight. It should be really, really exciting if nothing else.
Yeah, and it's obviously going to be an important one. But I guess on a little bit of a lighter note, tomorrow, March 26th, our Passive Parks Naturalist is going to be hosting a exciting Trail Talk. It's going to be at Wigeon Point and it's going to start at 9:30 a.m. We invite everybody to come out and attend. We would like for everyone to RSVP if possible. You can do that by calling 843-592-0941, or you can email destiny.reyns@bcgov.net.
And those Trail Talks are fantastic events. They're free, they're family-friendly. I went on and went on one and I learned a ton. And there's so many parks in Beaufort County that you don't know exist until you go out and see how beautiful they are. And I would say it's really a great testament to this area's kind of desire to conserve nature. And that kind of leads me back to another agenda item tonight because the Green Space Program, which was approved by voters in 2022, is what's funding this purchase of the conservation easement tonight. So it's a super, super important initiative and we're all really excited. Yes, so another announcement, we're gonna just kind of shift gears a little bit and talk about the Defuski Island Ferry. Qualified discount rider cards are now going to be required starting April 30th. This is as part of cleaning up the database of riders and assisting in the transition to the new county subsidized provider, Low Country Ferry. These passes can be obtained online, so just go to beaufortcountysc.gov or call Palmetto Breeze at 843-757-5782, extension 2, to initiate the process of getting your qualified discount rider card. And if you don't have it by April 30th, unfortunately, you are going to have to pay the full rate.
Yes, and while we're doing announcements, another one we have is everybody knows that it is an election year and the elections are coming up. And so in light of that, the Beaufort County Board of Voter Registration and Elections is hosting five community forums to educate and inform the public on the upcoming election season. Topics will include what's on the ballot, voter registration, how to register, confirming voting status, deadlines, polling locations, including the new voting sites, and how to become a poll worker. So if any of these topics interest you or you would like to know more, you can visit any of these upcoming community forums. The first one is going to be Wednesday, April 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Keep in mind, these are all going to be 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So the first one, Wednesday, April 3rd, at the Bluffton Branch Library located on 120 Palmetto Way. The next one is April 10th, at Purcell Hall in Penn Center, 16 Penn Center Circle West. Then on Wednesday, April 17th, in the Port Royal Town Hall located at 700 Perris Avenue. The next one is going to be out in Hilton Head at the Hilton Head Branch Library, 11 Beach City Road. The next one, Tuesday, May 7th, at Mount Carmel Baptist Church, 367 Keene's Neck Road. These forums are open, free to the public, and no reservation required, so come on out.
That was an amazing catch, by the way. Are you working on your March Madness skills?
My bracket needs a little bit of work, but yes, definitely.
Well, it's tax time and time's running out to fill those taxes. The Beaufort County Library is continuing their free tax preparation assistance to Beaufort County citizens who qualify. This program's available for anyone making less than $63,398 annually, those with different abilities, or those 60 and older. The Low Country Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program is offered in collaboration with the Beaufort County Human Services Alliance and the United Way of the Low Country. For more details or to schedule your appointment, please visit www.aarp.org/money or call the Hilton Head and Bluffton Branch Libraries.
Yes, as we all know, time is ticking for the taxes, so make sure you utilize these services if you qualify. And just in time for spring, although it's a little bit on the chilly side today, Bluffton's All Joy Boat Landing reopens today at 1:00 p.m. So those of you that know and love that place, get on back out there. The boat landing had been closed to facilitate the installation of a new 180-foot sectional dock consisting of nine 8x20 floating dock sections. So a lot of improvements to that and we hope that people are able to go out there and enjoy it once again.
And as this room fills up, for those of you who might not be able to see it online, this room is packed, but I would like to take a moment to thank you for joining us here at BCTV and give a special shout out to our broadcast specialists who make meetings like this happen. Our broadcast team is always developing and working on new and exciting content that matters to the Beaufort County area. And new this year is an exciting schedule of shows and programming available on Canal Channel's Comcast Channel 2, Hargray Channel's 9 and 113, Spectrum Channel 1304. And just like you're watching us now, you can stream us live on beaufortcounty.tv or on YouTube and on our Roku apps, Apple TV, Android TV, and Amazon Fire.
And a huge shout out, like you mentioned, to BCTV, to Troy, who has done a great job at keeping us in a clear view with camera. I know it's been hard and a lot of people want to get in here, but yeah, we can assure everybody, we will be wrapping up here momentarily in just a few minutes. But while we are on that topic, the, not really that topic, but on the topic of announcements, the Beaufort County Veterans Affairs Office is currently closed this week and will return to normal business hours Monday, April 1st. They're going to be conducting staff training throughout the week. So if you need your services, keep that in mind before you head out there that they are closed this week.
And if you live or know of some historic areas on unincorporated St. Helena Island and South of the Broad, we need your help. A Historic Resource Survey of unincorporated Beaufort County on St. Helena Island and South of the Broad is being done right now through mid-April. The county has retained professional historians and architectural historians from Stan Tech Consulting to complete this project. Historic Resource Surveys are an important planning tool and they help the county prepare for future preservation efforts. They also honor and celebrate our diverse and unique heritage, of which we have so, so much here in Beaufort County. But the survey will identify and document these places, especially if they were built between 1950 and 1979. And you can fill out a questionnaire at tinyurl.com/bchistoricplaces or just go to our website, beaufortcountysc.gov. And it'll, we've got a news release that'll take you to the site.
Yes, and a public meeting was hosted on this on March 21st. And if you're interested in getting more information, you can find it on demand at beaufortcounty.tv. If you're just tuning in, just a couple more moments here. As you can see, it is getting full. You're watching here on BCTV and we have the upcoming county council meeting. Hannah, can you give us one last refresh of kind of what we can expect and what agenda items there's going to be?
Absolutely. For those just turning in, just a reminder, you can always view agendas, agenda packets, minutes, and our schedule at beaufortcountysc.gov. At 5 o'clock today, we are going to hear a statement from County Council Chairman Passamit and interim Administrator John Robinson on the Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd forensic audit and investigations. And we're also going to get several updates. We're going to get the LATS study in there. We're going to get the conservation easement and more. Those are just the highlights.
All right, and that is all the time that we have. Thank you for tuning in here and stay tuned for the county council meeting here in just a moment.
It's Monday, March 25th. If you take a look at the dais, you will see 10 of the 11 of us are here. Mr. Dawson could not be with us today. He has a family emergency. All others are with us. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And then please remain standing for the invocation by Councilwoman Alice Howard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'd like to read something about nature because as we all know, spring has sprung and we're doing a lot of good work in Beaufort County and Jasper County regarding nature. First of all, I have a quote from George Washington Carver. "I love to think of nature as an unlimited broadcasting station through which God speaks to us every hour if we will only tune in." If you'll bow your heads. Heavenly Father, you are the master artist and nature is your masterpiece. I stand in awe before your creation, amazed at the work of your hands. As I go throughout my daily life, help me not to forget that your love for me is demonstrated all around. I just need to open my eyes and look. Amen.
Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Before I ask for approval of the agenda, what I'm going to do this evening with council's permission is I am going to combine the citizen comments that are at the beginning of the meeting and the end of the meeting because we do have a contingent from Defuski Island who would like to speak to us. And if they have to wait till the end of the meeting, they're going to stay overnight. We don't want them to do that, so I'm going to do that. Second of all, item number 17, which is what everybody is here about, I'm going to take that first item, action on that item as item number 12 after we approve the consent agenda. Also, what I'm going to do so that we have adequate time for the others who want to speak is those people who want to speak about 5B, which is part of number 17, I'm going to hold off on your speaking till we open that up for discussion. You see what we're going to do. We may be able to satisfy exactly what you want us to do. So with all of that in mind, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the agenda will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Next is the approval of the minutes of February 26th. May I have a motion?
They were not included in my packet, so I can't move it.
Mr. McKellen will make the motion? A second, please.
I'll second it.
Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Nope, it's there today.
Yep. Seeing no discussion, the minutes will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Okay, the next item. We have an investigation report and recommendations by Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd. And before Mr. Nicholson comes up, I want to set the stage. Hold on a second. Today, we're going to receive the report and recommendations from Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd. This report is the result of seven months and more than 800 hours of investigative work that the county council hired Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd and its consultants to perform. On behalf of the county council, I want to give some context to this report before we receive it. During council's special call meeting on July 24th of 2023, council announced that it had become aware of the failure by some county employees and elected officials to comply with the county's procurement code, budgets, P-card policies, and other rules and regulations. As a result of this information council received, it placed the county's administrator on administrative relief, administrative leave with pay immediately and until further notice. Four days later, on July 28th, 2023, council voted to terminate the county administrator for cause based upon additional information council received relating to these same issues. During the meeting of July 24th, council authorized the Finance Administration and Economic Development Committee to identify and to recommend to council a firm to conduct several investigations and reviews. The firm would be asked to do the following. Conduct a thorough review of all purchases that occurred on or after January 1st of 2023. Conduct a thorough review of all contracts for professional services the county entered into after January 1st, 2023. Conduct a review of the county's procurement codes, policies, and procedures and to provide council with recommendations for updates, revisions, new measures, and any other changes the firm believed are necessary to strengthen the procurement process, including the procurement code, our policies, and our procedures. And fourth, conduct an audit of the county's P-card system for the fiscal years 2019 through 2023 and report the firm's findings to council and make recommendations for any necessary changes. On July 28th, the same day council terminated Mr. Green for cause, Beaufort County issued a request for qualifications seeking qualified firms to conduct a review and investigations that I just described. Due to the urgent nature of the investigations, the request for qualifications was only open for three weeks. Two firms responded, Burr Foreman and Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd. On August 28th, 10 days after the deadline for the firms to respond for the RFQ, council interviewed both firms. That same day, the Finance Committee voted in a special call meeting to recommend that council hire Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd to perform the review and investigations. That same afternoon, council convened a special call meeting. During that meeting, council accepted and ratified the recommendation of the Finance Committee to hire Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd. On September 8th, 2023, Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd and the Beaufort County signed an engagement agreement. Since then, Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd and its consultant have spent hundreds of hours investigating and working with staff on the review and investigations. We understand that the investigations are complete, but Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd's work is not. It continues to work with staff to develop a new procurement code, to enhance our P-card policies, and to delve deeper into the issues Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd found in the contracts and P-card purchases. That work will continue in the months ahead. This brings us to why we are here today. Almost seven months to the day after council selected Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, council has been briefed on the firm's findings. They are not good. We did not expect them to be good. We expected Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd to be brutally honest and frank so that county council and Beaufort County government can learn from the weaknesses and frankly, the willful abuses and refusal to comply with of our policies and procedures to improve them, to improve compliance with them, and to hold accountable those who violate them and those who turn a blind eye to their violation. Mr. Nicholson, the shareholder and managing director of Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, conducted and presided over these investigations. He will present the firm's findings. Mr. Nicholson, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of county council, it's a pleasure to be here with you again. Some of my introductory comments will parrot what chairman said, but I think they are important for the, to get fulsome report. In the wake of the much-publicized issue surrounding the then-current, now-former Beaufort County Administrator Eric Greenway, Beaufort County Council engaged Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd PA, working with Swift Water Strategies LLC pursuant to a competitive solicitation process to review the county's purchases in 2023 to determine whether such purchases complied with the county's procurement ordinance, policies, and regulations which- with the county's procurement ordinance, policies, and regulations, which collectively will refer to as the procurement code, to identify purchases that did not comply with the county's procurement code, and the reasons why they didn't comply, and to make recommendations to county council on how to improve the county's purchasing practices, including providing advice on whether to revise any or all of the procurement code. Council also tasked us with reviewing all purchase card or P-card purchases from fiscal years 2019 through 2023, and similarly asked for a report on the propriety of these purchases and recommendations on how the county could improve its P-card purchasing practices. As a part of this investigation, we reviewed thousands of documents, interviewed and had discussions with many past and current county employees and officials, and analyzed the county's procurement code, its P-card manual, and the practices of county staff in relation to these guidelines. Throughout this process, Beaufort County staff have been extremely helpful. They gathered and made available an extraordinary amount of data, and they have willingly and openly discussed issues involving Beaufort County's procurement and purchasing practices and procedures. Moreover, while county council wanted a prompt in to and report of our investigation, at no time did council try to unduly rush our work, and at all times, county council has supported our efforts and expressed to us the desire for Beaufort County government to come better as a result of this process. Now, some findings. First, procurement issues. In 2023, several individuals with Beaufort County government failed to properly follow and in certain circumstances blatantly disregarded the county's procurement code. These issues began at the top of the county's government structure with our leadership team that, at worst, willfully flouted the county's procurement code, or at the very least were woefully ignorant of it. Regardless of whether the county's leadership's failure to adhere to purchasing guidelines was a result of their willful disobedience of the law, or ignorance of it, or some combination thereof, this failure led to an overall culture of laxity within Beaufort County government with respect to the procurement code and related guidelines that has resulted not only in flagrant violations of the procurement code, but also in many failures to follow technical details of the code and to loosely enforce those guidelines. While it is easy to look back now and criticize the actions, and in several cases, inactions of county staff relative to their procurement and purchasing activities over the last year, it is important to remember that some of the most egregious problems with the procurement process came from the very top of Beaufort County government, namely, the former county administrator. Two contracts, one involving weighted blankets and one involving consulting services, were entered into by the county administrator without any formal solicitation or even a purchase order, both of which are requirements of the procurement code. These contracts also included proper involvement of county staff members who had a personal stake in these contracts. Although improper approvals were made at first of these contracts, eventually, they were terminated properly through the efforts of county staff. Another purchase of almost $800,000 worth of playground equipment and carried out by a former county director took place without county council approval, which is required of all purchases over $200,000, and without the county having a formal solicitation or even a signed agreement for the equipment. As with the other two contracts discussed above, when other county staff learned of this issue, albeit after the equipment had already been installed, staff alerted the interim county administrator who alerted county council. Apart from these blatant violations, the review of procurement practices revealed several other issues. While none of these issues rise to the level of willfulness or blatant disregard of the procurement code already discussed, they do illustrate the culture of laxity mentioned previously. Examples of this laxity include overuse of the county's sole-source procurement method, a legitimate procurement method, but one that should be used sparingly, and a failure to complete in many instances all of the documentation that the procurement code requires for competitive solicitations or legitimate exemptions from competitive solicitations such as sole-source procurements. Let's talk a little bit about P-card, the P-cards. Purchasing for P-cards increased 85% from 2019 to 2013, which is $1,104,808 in 2019 to $2,039,467 in 2023. Approximately 172 county staff members had P-cards and also elected officials had P-cards at the current time. In several areas, P-card use seems excessive, personal, frivolous, and not business-driven, and often in violation of the county's P-card manual. Examples of such purchases are individualized office decor, office holiday decorations, office furniture, an Apple Watch, a Bible annotator, inappropriate books, earbuds, headsets, individualized cellphone cases, office snacks, meals, and flowers. P-card purchasing is not centralized or properly tracked among departments, making it difficult to ensure that such purchases are warranted. Authorizations and approvals are also not routinely handled appropriately to provide proper oversight, as subordinates often approve the P-card purchases of their superiors, and at times, staff members authorize their own expenses. Actions taken and further recommendations. During the course of our investigation, we recommended that Beaufort County Council adopt a whistleblower policy, and council did so. We have also recommended that county council adopt a substantially revised procurement code, and council has agreed to this also, with the first reading of a substantially revised procurement ordinance to be scheduled within the next several weeks. In addition to the foregoing, we have made several recommendations to county council to address P-card expenditures and the oversight of them. These include, but are not limited to, reducing the number of P-card users, centralizing P-card purchasing, and requiring a much more robust authorization and accountability process. We have also recommended to county council that a direct interim county administrator to implement a robust training protocol for all relevant county staff concerning the county's procurement code, P-card manual, and best practices for how to comply with these guidelines and be effective stewards of county resources. As part of and in addition to this training, we have also advised that the county educate its staff about the county's new whistleblower policy. We believe that it is critical that staff feel protected and empowered to report violations of the procurement code, P-card manual, and other purchasing irregularities. So in summary and conclusion, several of Beaufort County staff and elected officials failed to adhere to the county's procurement code, P-card manual, and other related guidelines and best practices. Some of these failures were egregious and were more than likely than not, they were willful. Other failures, and indeed, the majority of them, arose out of a culture emanating from the top of the county's organization chart that at best looked upon procurement and purchasing guidelines as mere suggestions and not the law. It is important to note, however, that for each blatant violation of the procurement code that occurred, someone on the county staff raised their hand, albeit sometimes too late to prevent the violation, and questioned what had occurred and was occurring, even though it usually meant questioning the actions of someone higher and often much higher on the organizational chart. While it is evident that many within Beaufort County staff realize that there have been issues for some time with Beaufort County's purchasing practices, it is also evident that these same staff members want to make sure these types of issues do not occur again, and they are committed to helping see that Beaufort County's government is run in a professional, efficient manner. Likewise, county council has expressed a desire to learn from these past issues and to use them in order to improve upon Beaufort County's government. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any member of council need any other clarification of information? Seeing none, will you give a copy of that to the clerk so it becomes part of the official record, please? Okay. Next, I'm going to call on our interim county administrator, Mr. John Robinson, to not only give his administrator's report, but to indicate what the administration is going to do as a result of the recommendations that were made. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chairman and Council. Each of you have a copy of my statement for this evening. You're welcome to ask questions, probably towards I get to the end because I have about four pages to read. First, I'd like to say Beaufort County is grateful for the months of hard work and cooperation from our assistant county administrators, our CFO and finance team, our information technology department, records management department, purchasing and procurement department, our legal team, and many others who put in hours of work to meet the needs of Haynesworth-Sinkler-Boyd as they conducted their numerous hours of interviews, document inspections, policy, procedure reviews, and general investigation of Beaufort County practices. The documents and actions investigated to reach the conclusion presented by Haynesworth-Sinkler-Boyd reflect the culture of the past administration. Culture change began immediately after county council took action to remove the previous administrator. Changes continued over the past eight months and will continue into the future. Changing culture is arguably among the most difficult challenges an organization can tackle, but I think we're on the right path. I will describe actions taken by this administration and our Beaufort County team to correct problems identified by staff and Haynesworth-Sinkler-Boyd. Beaufort County has adapted to change quickly. We began rebuilding relationships with our peers, partners, and continued to do the business of the people while suffering with the burden of our recent past. I'm confident that our Beaufort County team is filled with well-intended professionals who exemplify quality, character, and integrity. The actions I'm about to describe are not the result of my individual effort. They are the collaborative effort of our Beaufort County team. I have, I do, however, accept full responsibility for the hardship to staff which some of these actions have caused. County council has trusted and empowered me to do what is necessary to mend the mistakes of the past and pave a way forward. So I'm going to go through several actions that county, the county staff has taken. I may have missed some. There are some minor ones, lots of things that we have done. These are the major things that we have completed or working on since July 24, 2023. So on Monday, July 24, 2023, I was then the public safety, the assistant county administrator for public safety, and was appointed that afternoon as the acting county administrator by county council, and four days later, as the interim county administrator. So on that Monday, the 24th, the following day, Tuesday, the 25th, executive staff began collecting data on our purchasing card system, P-cards, I'll refer to them, and including our current policy, the number of cards issued, to whom they were issued, and their uses. Two days later, July 27, I issued a county-wide directive resetting all P-card accounts, account spending limits to reflect the policy. This message was received by all county staff and all elected officials regardless whether they or their departments possessed or used the Beaufort County P-card system. This message included a PDF copy of the current then-P-card policy and a quick reference guide to county's purchasing policy, including purchasing thresholds and contract processes. To be clear, not all elected officials participated in the Beaufort County P-card system at that time. Those who did not participate were the sheriff's office and his staff, the probate court and that staff, and all members of county council. None of those officials possessed or used Beaufort County purchasing cards at that The policy reminder for all staff to review our P-card manual, which was effective July 1, 2021, to ensure that all policies and procedures are followed. A copy of the manual is attached in electronic communication for your convenience. That's the top of the email that I sent to staff. On Thursday, July 27, so just a few days later, we conducted some document preservation work. So I reached out to our assistant county administrator for information, technology, and communication, Patrick Hill, along with his deputy information technology director, Shaquille Polite. They and their teams worked to verify the protection of critical electronic finance data, purchasing and procurement data, including P-card statements and MUNIS activity, so backed up all of our electronic systems. This data was protected in a cloud server environment with nightly performance of data backups. The data was retained and archived for use in the pending investigation. The following week, Tuesday, August 8, I met, I hosted a meeting in this room with county council chairman Joe Passamit. During that meeting, I invited all elected officials, county staff, department heads and up. We had 60 to 70 folks in the room, so it was pretty full, not quite as full as it's tonight, but there was a lot here. During that meeting, I wanted all of our executive staff to hear directly from me. I offered my expectation of compliance with the rules, and when I say rules, I mean South Carolina law, our county ordinance, policy, and ethical, our ethical standards as described in our Beaufort County handbook. This was the first step towards changing the culture of the organization. I spoke further about strict adherence to our P-card policy and purchasing policies. I continued to talk about my expectations of performance and my wishes for the future culture of our organization. During that same month, August of 2023, we conducted purchasing and procurement training. The Beaufort County Deputy Director of Purchasing, Victoria Moyer, began a series of training sessions for department heads, ACAs, and their staffs who approve, conduct purchasing administration, submit requisitions, and/or navigate the procurement process for contracts. These sessions, as well as many one-on-one sessions, were held to ensure compliance with procurement ordinance, policies, and procedures. Following week, August 16, I had a conversation with county attorney Brittany Ward. We spoke about a project she was working on with our IT department's web designer and programmer, Josh Riley. The program they were building began in June of 2023, was an electronic legal review process. This conversation revealed an opportunity to expand that project to include county contracts and other documents. The vision of the system could eliminate intentional or unintentional procedure errors in our procurement and purchasing processes. Josh and Brittany worked together over the following several months with input from various departments until a functional system began beta testing in November of 2023. A simplified explanation of this internal system is a decision tree. It requires designated approvers at each step in the process to consider, their consideration for final approval. The document review system captures notes, documents, and other data specific to each transaction. The system was implemented on January 1, 2024. The first contract was processed the following day, on January 2, 2024, by Beaufort County's Hilton Head Airport. Implementation has not been without its challenges. However, the system has proven to be extremely adaptable, and we continue to refine its capabilities. Josh Riley has proven his value as an expert in the development of this tool. In the past 90 days, really, I guess it's 85 days since we did that, but in the past 90 days, the system has helped staff process over 100 contracts, legal reviews, and other documents. The document review system has offered a smooth transition of materials through proper internal review and preparation of documents to transfer as inputs into our MUNICode system for presentation to county council and its committees. During the months of November, October, and November, our Beaufort County procurement director, Dave Thomas, introduced us to a company called Card Integrity. He introduced this program to county staff and county council. The service, Card Integrity, is a service that monitors the expense data for P-cards and requisitions. Data captured from our MUNIS software, that is our government finance and accounting software program we use, data captured from our MUNIS software is first analyzed by the service and then monitored by internal staff to effectively mitigate risk of misuse, duplicate invoices, or fraud. Our CFO, Denise Christmas, tested this system with 30 days of data, which immediately revealed opportunities for improvement in county operations. Beaufort County finance and procurement staff have worked with providers to customize this monitoring system to the needs of our county, and we expect to enter that contract for service in the following weeks. for service in the following weeks. There's more. January 1, 2024, our Beaufort County Human Resources Department, led by its director, Catherine Mead, spent the better part of last year creating a new employee handbook. That handbook was implemented on January 1, 2024. Per the request of county council and with the help of Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, Beaufort County authored and included a whistleblower policy in our new handbook. This policy offers a confidential path and protection for any employee with knowledge of wrongdoing to report it without fear of revenge, retaliation, or retribution. Next is our new procurement and purchasing policy. Working together with Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, Beaufort County is in the final stages of completion and execution of an entirely new purchasing and procurement policy. Once completed, all appropriate county employees will be required to attend training on these policies with regularly planned continuing education. I'll talk about education a little bit next. Also, our Human Resources Department has executed the use of a new evaluation system which includes a training software. It's called NeoGov. In the past few months, our Workforce Development Specialist, Amber Black, has rolled out regular required training for all employees. This includes specialized learning paths to meet the needs of each department or specific job requirements. Training classes are done in an online environment, giving employees flexibility to complete training without interruption of their routine work. Completed courses become part of the employee's record and are stored inside the database of NeoGov. One of those programs or one of those educations was, in fact, the whistleblower policy. An example of continuing internal reassessment. March of 2023, we transitioned the, our P-card statement approvals from a paper-type approval system to an electronic system. During that transition, while the transition greatly improved the efficiency of processing our P-card purchasing, it introduced the unintended opportunity for misuse by removing a layer of management approval oversight. That missing layer of oversight was recently identified and corrected. The finance system software has been adjusted to require Assistant County Administrators monthly approval of P-card use for each department prior to their processing of payments. So, we've done a lot. I didn't mention everything that we've done. Individual departments have also done specific work related to their organizations and how they manage their purchasing and procurement. I have, I look at the changes so far in phases. Phase one is the completion of the final report from Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd. Although the final report is very close for, for us to receive, it's only part of phase one. Staff will continue to work with Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd to implement new policy and procedure as well as develop systems to ensure continued compliance. Phase two is the corrective action. Corrective action began immediately, however, the objective report from Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd has inspired staff to review in further detail ordinance, policy, and procedures to improve in areas which may be in conflict with best pa, best practices, industry best practices. Phase three is an assessment of policy violation which may require further investigation or disciplinary action. Beaufort County Executive Staff, Beaufort County Legal Team, working with Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, will continue to work on specific details of their investigation. Egregious or intentional violations of policy, procedure, or ethical behavior will be investigated, and those responsible held accountable for their actions. Finally, phase four is compliance and reassessment. Compliance and reassessment is the purposeful, routine evaluation of ordinance compliance, policy best practices, and program sustainability. I want the public, my colleagues, county council, and county staff to know that although we've taken these initial steps, there's still work to do. I will continue to encourage a workplace culture which supports collaboration, communication, and personal displays of character. Every member of Beaufort County must be empowered to recognize when improvement is needed and possess the initiative to execute change with support of their chain, chain of command. I will continue to address issues presented by Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd and will continue to work to earn the public's confidence in their government. This is not an individual effort. Permanent change can only be achieved through leadership and teamwork. Thank you. I'm open for questions.
Any questions of council? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
To the members of the audience and those looking on, sorry that you had to listen to all of this, but it was very important that you understand, we did not take this lightly. We've spent an expensive, extensive amount of time, energy, and money to assure that we are as transparent as we possibly can. Mistakes were made, we have acknowledged those mistakes, and we're moving on. Okay, is there any other report? Thank you. Is there any other report?
The Administrator's Board, I have three people to recognize.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Mary Brantley from our Planning and Zoning Department. I don't think she is here. Nope. Okay. I'll keep going. So, Mary is a zoning analyst, too. She's worked for Beaufort County for two years. She, she reviews plans for single-family homes and zoning district compliance, assists the public with questions about permitting and zoning-related matters. Mary was born in Ecuador. She is fluent in Spanish, speaking, and reading. She's lived in Beaufort since 2004 and enjoys helping people in a meaningful way. Thank you, Mary. There's Mary. And we have Latrevet Obaya from the Assessor's Office. She has, she is a mobile home assessing technician. She's coming up on 16 years of employment with Beaufort County. She's responsible for recording all mobile home, all mobile homes in Beaufort County for taxation purpose. There's, there she is. She is the mother of two young ladies and one son. Her youngest daughter is studying to become a pharmacist at USC Columbia. Her son is a First Sergeant in the United States Army, and her oldest daughter is a certified medical assistant. In her spare time, she is the Nana for a basketball team, a cheerleading team, and soccer team. She's very busy. All right. Thank you, Ms. Obaya. This last recognition is Maria Smalls. Oh, I'm sorry. So, a few weeks ago, during the 48th Annual Conference of the South Carolina Association of Registration and Election Officials, it's called SCARE. Their annual conference was held in Myrtle Beach between March 4th and March 9th. Maria is the Executive Director of our Board of Voter Registration and Elections. The SCARE Association awarded Marie the Moore Award for her years of service and dedication to election integrity, implementation of upgraded electronic voting programs, and ensuring on a whole that voters and candidates can be confident that the election process is efficient, accurate, and accountable. The Moore Award is presented each year to the SCARE Annual, at the SCARE Annual Legislative Conference, to a member of SCARE who best exemplifies the spirit of the organization through their continued unselfish giving of time and efforts to make SCARE a more educated, concerned group that promotes training in individuals and counties. The Moore Award is the highest award the SCARE organization presents. It was established in the memory of Betty and Marcia Moore, who worked tirelessly, tirelessly from a state association of registration and elected officials. This award is fashioned after the J. Mitchell Graham Award of the Association of Counties and is presented to the member of SCARE who best exemplifies the spirit of the organization. We extend our congratulations to Mrs. Smalls. Thank you so much.
I just want to thank all of you, especially county council, for supporting the Board of Voter Registration and Elections in the effort to better elections. And I want to thank the great team, some of them may be out there, my staff and my board members, and all the folks from around the state who recognize what we do in election. The election is an important process in our democratic system, and it definitely takes a team. It's never just one person. So I just want to give a shout out to all of our poll workers and all of our facility directors, people who are out there allowing the Board of Voter Registration to use their facilities as polling places, and all of you and all the folks in this room who are participating in the democratic process when it comes down to voting. So just remember, get out and vote is important. And we are also, this is a shameless plug, we are looking for poll workers. So please, please, if you have some time on your hands, volunteer, and we will gladly train you to be a poll worker in Beaufort County, the greatest sets of folks in the state of South Carolina, Beaufort County poll workers, y'all. Thank you all very much. I am honored and humbled by the award that was presented to me by my peers in the state of South Carolina.
Sir, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are at our first citizens' comments, and as I said, when we get to item 17, which is now going to be right after we do the consent agenda, we'll have some information for you and action that we are going to take this evening. That being said, we have a couple other people who do want to speak, and I'd like to call up the individuals from Defuski Island, Cade Yarborough first, and then Michael Hubbard after that, because I know they have to get on the road. Back to Defuski Island. Cade, good evening.
Good evening, Beaufort County Council. I'm Cade Yarborough, Chairman of the Defuski Island Council. I provided with, I provided a packet with several items relating the ferry situation. That includes the following statement approved by a 6-0 vote at our March 19th meeting. The Defuski Island Council serves as an advisory group or a voice of Defuski with the Beaufort County and other government entities. Our count, our council has, well, as many, our council, as well as many Defuski residents, have repeatedly expressed concerns about the process used by the, by the county in choosing the current public ferry operator, including a disregard for vessel and operator requirements included in the RFP. We have now seen numerous cases of injuries sustained by ferry riders caused by an unsuitable boat. The situation for our senior residents, for those with physical limitations, has especially been problematic as they face extreme difficulties in navigating the embarkation docks and the boat itself. On March 14th, a ferry rider fell into the water as, after a boat ramp collapsed. This was a life-threatening situation as he was left in the water for an extended period of time before he was towed to a different marina by another boat captain and crew. We are thankful that he was able to swim, especially since some of our residents are unable to do so. And we are thankful that the water was calm that day and that he wasn't injured or killed by the boat hitting the dock. On behalf of our community, the Defuski Island Council is now saying enough is enough. Accordingly, we strongly urge the Beaufort County Council and staff to acknowledge that the mistake was made in the selection in the inexperienced and underfunded ferry provider. We further call that the county to immediately take any action and all necessary measures to ensure that the Defuski residents and visitors be provided with a regular, reliable, and most importantly, safe ferry service. To do otherwise would be a great disservice to our community and could be very well a result, could very well result in more hardship, more injuries, or even the loss of lives. This was our statement that was approved by a 6-0 vote at last Tuesday, last Tuesday's Defuski Island Council meeting. Since we approved that statement, we received a letter from the Disability Rights, Disability Rights South Carolina Organization expressing strong concern about obstacles facing our residents with physical challenges as well as senior residents. This organization has reinforced concerns we already have expressed to you about the ferry issues. Once again, we call for you to take immediate action and strong steps to reinstate a safe, reliable ferry service. Councilman Lawson, as our county councilman, we particularly advocate to you to fight for our well-being of our constituents and who are also your constituents as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Mike Hubbard. I'm a resident of Defuski Island, five-year resident. I'm the Vice Chair of the Defuski Island Council. Just wanted to bring you up to date on a meeting we had back on the 5th of March with the county administrator Robinson, Hank Amundson, and the county attorney Brittany Ward. It was, it was actually a very good opportunity for us to sit down. There were three members of the Defuski Island Council and several longtime island residents who could add context, a historical context to the ferry situation, when the ferry came into being and how the ferry has operated over these many years. And I think it was an opportunity for us to kind of calm the situation down a little bit and for everybody to have an open dialogue. What we have decided to do is that in the future, we'll continue our discussions with county administrator and, and his staff. Some of the things that we need to develop over the next few months is we need to develop an evacuation plan, should that become necessary. We need to, we asked for an update on the status of the condemnation of the Melrose Dock. That's still in litigation, and there was no information to be added to that. Obviously, the ADA situation is a big issue for us, and I think is probably the most important issue that we're dealing with currently with the existing ferry system. And then, one of the issues came up, just a practical issue. The current ferry operator was given exclusive use of the two docks that they go into, both on Defuski Island and also on Pinckney Island. Over the years, we have had residents who own their own boats go to Pinckney Island, and now they can't do that. And what we were able to work out is, in one case, one of our, our island electrician was there, so he and his wife bring the boat over. It's a little bit inconvenient. He will let the wife out, she will get the car, and then he'll go across to Buckingham Landing. That's not an ideal situation, but there's really no place for people in the community who have boats to be able to go and, and get to their car. Also, in your packet tonight was a survey, and I have to tell you, it's a very professional survey that was done by one of our island residents. She received responses from 114 island residents. Put that into context, I'm not sure what the current census is of Defuski Island, but if you think about it, there's probably 300 to 400 full-time residents, maybe a few more. And honestly, that's a pretty significant return on the, on the, the survey. So, thank you. It's very important, and it's in your, summary is in your packets. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. I again speak on the needs of St. Helena Island residents. Our community needs a state-of-the-art community center for our adults and youth to use. When we look at Buck Walter and we look at the website and see what all the amenities that they have. Um... that they have, St. Helena has none, if you look them up. We have nothing. We have to come and travel thirty-one miles to Burton Wells. Everything is done at Burton Wells. We have no baseball complex that we use outside basketball courts. They're there, not being used. There's no indoor anything for us. We do have a couple of places that the senior citizens use, but we need something for our youth. We know that our youth are the future, and we want to do a community center so that they will have a place to go, not only with recreation activities, but educational activities, after-school activities, a place that will be open and that they will be, it will be enjoyable, a place that their parents can go as well, where we can educate them, and we have programs for them. So we're looking forward to the council to speak with us and to help us to build a center on St. Helena Island, a state-of-the-art center, not a fixer-upper, but a state-of-the-art center, so that we may use that center for the good of our community. I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we have several individuals who would like to talk about item number sixteen on our agenda. Item number sixteen is talking about procurement of a conservation easement on several parcels of real property located in Jasper County known as Gregory Neck. First one, Catherine McWilliams. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the council for the opportunity to speak in support of the Port Royal Sound Gregory Neck Project. My name is Katie McWilliams. I'm the Director of Land Protection for the Nature Conservancy in South Carolina. In February, we purchased the forty-four-hundred-acre Gregory Neck property, resulting in the largest financial transaction we have ever done in the state in fifty years. We took the risk because this property is so valuable as a wildlife corridor. Its forests and marshes are critical for water quality in Port Royal Sound, and because it is important for the Department of Defense flight training routes. Our risk is only possible because of the potential to place a conservation easement on the property with the Open Land Trust and with the support of the REPI Sentinel Landscape Program, the South Carolina Conservation Bank, and Beaufort County's Green Space Program. We thank you for continuing to lead the way in conservation in the region and in the state, and being willing to think outside the lines of the county and recognize that nature does not know boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, a true friend of ours from Marine Corps Air Station, Colonel Mark Bortman.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Beaufort County Council, good afternoon. I'm Colonel Mark Bortman, I'm the commanding officer of Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort. Thank you for having me today to highlight our support for the protection of the Gregory Neck property. As many of you know and have been involved since two thousand and six, the Encroachment Protection Partnership between Beaufort County, the Open Land Trust, and Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort has invested over sixty-nine million to protect over six thousand three hundred acres in perpetuity from potential land uses that could negatively impact our military operations. Preventing incompatible development and enhancing our resiliency on the Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort throughout the Low Country, where our Marines, sailors, civilians, employees, and their families live, is critical to maintaining and preserving the military mission in the Low Country and the assets that support it. Beaufort County and its residents stand apart from other military and military-adjacent communities by bringing your own money to the, and collaboration to the table in support of this critical partnership. The Rural and Critical Lands Preservation Program that protects land within Beaufort County and now the Green Space Program that scales up this investment and takes a proactive approach to fully protect and enhance health and well-being of both our military and civilian community on a regional scale. This is something that has never been done in the history of South Carolina and likely even in the country. The land and water quality protection benefits afforded by the preservation of these forty-four-hundred acres in the heart of Port Royal Sound, known as Gregory Neck, will not only significantly contribute to the county and other regional conservation goals, but will also protect local airspace utilized by Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort's F-eighteens, F-thirty-fives, and F-five squadrons by limiting incompatible development that could degrade training, enhancing resiliency, and ensuring protection of the Port Royal watershed. Conservation resilience needs of Beaufort County do not adhere to county boundaries or even state lines, neither do our world-class aircraft. It is because of this regional emphasis and the commitment to conservation and the military mission that the Department of Defense Readiness and Environmental Protection Integration Program, named REPI, awarded six million dollars to the protection of Gregory Neck. That's twenty-six percent of the total funding awarded by the REPI Challenge Program across the nation last year. Beaufort is unlike any military community in the country, maybe the world, and we are so proud to be a part of this unprecedented accomplishment. We have long appreciated that we are an integral part of this community and are grateful for Beaufort's unwavering support to the military mission. It makes a difference, and we are proud to be here, in the heart of the Port Royal Sound, rich with history, culture, and ecological diversity. We are the Sea Islands, home to Paris Island, the Gulliculture, Pat Conroy, the Heritage, and Forrest Gump. Thank you for allowing me to share the many benefits of the protecting, the military, protecting of Gregory Neck provides to Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Timothy.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I am Timothy Evans. I am the representative on the Green Space Advisory Committee for North Beaufort County. Mr. Dawson is not here, but I serve a role with Councilwoman Howard, with Senator Tom Davis, with Chairman Mike McShane on the committee, and four citizen representatives from four geographic regions of the county. As such, we take this responsibility very seriously in our fiduciary responsibility for dealing with taxpayer funds paid for by the citizens of Beaufort County to make wise decisions on how that money is spent. Bringing forth a proposal to spend a million dollars of that money in Jasper County, as our very first recommendation, did not come lightly, was not looked at as a easy decision, but the Gregory Neck Project was so big, so important, was at the heart of the source water for the Broad River, and had such a collection of partners at the table in the form of TNC, the Open Land Trust, the Marine Corps, the South Carolina Conservation Bank, that the bang for the buck that Beaufort County receives in, receives for this million-dollar investment far outweighs the amount of money being paid. As a member of the committee, we could not be more delighted to bring this forward as our first project, and we hope to see many more like it in the future.
Thank you. And finally, Kate Schaefer.
Hey, I don't think I've ever batted cleanup before, but I'll try my best. Kate Schaefer, Director of Land Protection with Open Land Trust. As you've heard, Gregory Neck is an incredible property and warrants conservation. It's well-deserving of investment by the Beaufort County Green Space Program for its thirteen-and-a-half miles of shoreline along the Cusahatchie and Tallahassee Rivers, two thousand acres of Upland pine, pine forest, over a thousand acres of maritime forest, and a variety of intact habitat types. It also straddles I-95 for over one and a half miles, and so it could have been anything, industrial, commercial, residential, or all of the above. Instead, it was purchased by landowners who intend to protect the property, and the Open Land Trust is proud to be a partner in that. This is an opportunity to employ green space funds, and so we thank you for the consideration. I want to highlight three things that came up when this project presented, went before the Land Use Committee about why does this matter? So why does this matter to the Green Space Program, to us as conservationists, to you all as county council, and to the happily full room that gets to learn a little bit about why this matters to them, too? I'll start with water quality, because to me, that's the most powerful and universal example from, for all ages, right? Whether you fish off of the Bolin Hall boat landing, or take a boat from the Broad River Bridge, or just eat shrimp and oysters, you swim off the waters of Hilton Head Plantation Beach, your water quality will be better for the land protection that occurs here. No amount of zoning or regulation can do what land protection does on a property like this. Second, you've heard, described far better than I could, and that is the impact to the military community. The airspace above Gregory Neck includes military flight corridors between Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort and Towns and Bombing Range, and you've heard about the partnership that Beaufort has employed with the military since two thousand and six. This additional four thousand acres adds to the sixty-three hundred protected, and is an example of the scale that we can achieve when we work together at this level of partnership, and how we can continue to meet the need to protect our pilots in the air. And then finally, this is the project for the Green Space Program, so this is an investment that matters for policy and for partnership. Protecting Gregory Neck adds to a large conservation corridor. It protects incredible habitat that has been identified nationally as habitat of significance. It relies on partner funds. We have secured a six-million-dollar grant from the REPI Challenge Program. Two million was recommended by the South Carolina Conservation Bank. The landowner is donating value, so Beaufort County's investment is seven-point-four percent of the whole, which is a remarkable value for the taxpayers. This also comports with Jasper County's land use and zoning policies, and I think sets a really important example for projects moving forward and the level of partnership we can achieve when we work together. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, now what we're going to do is to move to the liaison and committee reports, and then we'll take the action items, including those who want to speak about five B. So, who would like to go first? Ms. Howard?
Okay, a couple of things. We've already talked about the Green Space Committee, so I'll skip that one. The Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board meets Wednesday. Their Finance Committee met this morning, which I attended virtually. One interesting fact, births are up twenty-two percent at Beaufort Memorial Hospital compared to the year before. I attended the cyber, South, some cyber summit last week, along with Chairman Passamit and several people from our IT department. It was a great meeting for two days last week. Port Royal, the Spanish Moss Trail Crossing, unfortunately, is at a standstill for now based on some things that the Safe Harbor and the town are trying to work out so that that crossing can be put across, across Revolt Road. Also, at the Port Royal meeting, they recognized EMS, fire, and the police for saving a young Marine's life who was shot at some apartments in Port Royal. It was very moving and touching recognition of those, those people and the jobs that they do. And that's it.
Any others?
I'm going to get very concise on the Transportation Committee. Everybody can look at it online, but I find this interesting. We were informed that the South Carolina Department of Transportation received a concurrent resolution from the General Assembly requesting that DOT name the New Harbor Island Bridge in Beaufort County as the George J. Giordi Matinger III Bridge. And we are to be, are to erect appropriate markers or signs along this portion of the highway. In accordance with current law, this is my favorite part, expenses incurred in the fabrication and placement of dedication signs or markers must be paid for by the county from their transportation funds. So we have to remit five hundred dollars, and then the signs will be placed.
Excellent.
Yes.
Any others?
Just one. Last week, the Palmetto Breeze came to this chamber and presented, Mary Lou did, her thoughts on why it's incredible for us to keep on funding them for our transportation, to piggyback on what Tab has said about transportation. And also, last week, Frank Soul from the Hilton Head Island Rec came here to talk about his need to help a lot of families in what they do with the Island Rec with scholarships and all that, people that can't afford that. This one thing, I just want to back up a little bit. Look what's taken place here tonight. We started this meeting by talking to you about a county that might have done some things wrong with the way they're spending money, but we ended it with the good Colonel in this land preservation on how we can come together as a council, take care of the business that we need to do, and take care of the people that we need to support and protect and preserve what we love. This is my first year on council, never been in politics, and I'm proud to work with this group, and the reason why it's working is because of you. So thank you for being here. We appreciate it very much. I mean that.
And, anybody else?
Nope.
One final thing. As you know, we've had two readings of an ordinance for a one-percent sales tax. We have not had the third one as yet. The reason we did not have the third one, we wanted to have a couple of meetings. The first meeting took place on April the fifteenth, where the town managers of our municipalities got together with administration to talk about the referendum, to ensure that we were meeting the needs of our municipalities as we move forward. Everyone agreed in that meeting that that was a very good thing. They gave some suggestions. The following Friday, I met with the mayors of our municipalities. We had an excellent meeting. Out of that meeting came the following things that you should be aware of before we have our third reading. One, we have established five information sessions. They will take place on April the fourth. We're going to go to the Hilton Head Island Library. The people of Hilton Head will hear about the referendum and how it pertains to them. Thursday, April eleventh, we're going to go to Bluffton, the Buck Walter Recreation Center. We're going to do the same thing. How does it affect the citizens in Bluffton? Then on Thursday, April eighteenth, we're going to go to the USCB Performing Arts Center in, on two seventy-eight of, I'm sorry, north of the Broad for Beaufort and Port Royal. Finally, on Monday, the twenty-ninth, we're going to have St. Helena's Library. So we're going to go listen to the people as we present exactly what this referendum is about. One of, several of the things that came out, first of all, the mayors want you to know that this is a county municipal venture. We are collaborating. Two, we know that it is a transportation referendum. We can't emphasize enough that the focus is on road improvement and road safety. We're going to work together, we're going to utilize the funds, and one major change that we're going to ask county council to approve before third reading is we have agreed that green space is going away, but we don't want it to end. It is now going to become green belt. We have set aside eighty-five million dollars in that. We have agreed that's not enough. We're going to make it one hundred and fifty million dollars. So stay tuned, please. You'll get all of this information. It'll be posted on our website. No matter where you live in this county, you will get a chance to interact with us, to hear everything about the referendum, why it's necessary, how it will affect you. Okay, I would like a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. So move. Mr. McKellen makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Lawson makes the second. Do they motioned and seconded? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Okay, we are now going to be at item number seventeen. I want to set that up for you. Those of you in the audience who are watching us, you may not know who LATS is. LATS is the Local Area Transportation Study. They are the ones that are required to put up funding to study roads in the area. They're proposing three separate studies. The first study is called the Northern Transit Study. It's going to look at the northern areas, the transit needs, the potential routes, urbanization of the area north of the Broad. The city of Beaufort, the county of Beuford, and the town of Port Royal will invest money into that study. The second study is a study of South Carolina three fifteen, South Carolina forty-six, and the Bluffton Parkway Extension Study. That's going to involve Beuford County, city of Hartleville, town of Bluffton, and Jasper County. Now, that particular study goes from the circle at forty-six all the way down to the Jasper County line. The proposed Bluffton Parkway Extension The proposed Bluffton Parkway Extension has always been known as going through the Great Swamp, if you are familiar with that area. Obviously, that's not going to happen any longer because that property has been sold. This study is going to look at alternative ways to get people out of the county should a hurricane occur as they approach Bluffton Parkway to 170 and moving in that area down 46. The last study is the Bluffton Parkway from SC 170 to 278 at the Bluffton Parkway Flyover. So, it's the complete extension of the existing Bluffton Parkway. Now, everybody is here because it is believed that it also includes a study of 5B as part of that. You are going to hear, as we take action tonight, we're going to remove the county from any use of county funds towards a discussion or study of 5B. So, after we take that action, I will allow you time to question us on what we've done, what it means going forward. So, I'm going to ask for someone to make a motion to consider amending a previously adopted resolution, which is Resolution 2024/04, that authorize the provision of funds to the Low Country Area Transportation Study, known as LATS, for Beaufort County's portion of a local match for the following studies. One, the Northern Beaufort County Transit Study. Two, the SC 315/46 and Bluffton Parkway Extension Study. And three, the Bluffton Parkway from SC 170 to US 278 at the Bluffton Parkway Flyover. And further, to authorize the interim county administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Low Country Council of Governments for the management of the regional studies. May I have such a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that council consider amending Resolution 2024/04 because we need to have discussion about the inclusion of construction and study of 5B.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's motioned and seconded by Ms. Brown. Okay, is there an amendment anyone wants to put up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham?
I move to amend Resolution 2024/04 to exclude funding for any portion of the costs associated with studying the possible construction of 5B.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I think I heard Ms. Brown again. Okay, so, we have amended that. We will have a discussion about that. Is there anyone who wants to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham?
A lot of you were there in February when we talked about this at the LATS meeting, and it still was included when people came out and expressed that they did not want 5B to be considered. This is something that's been brought up since 2006. Living in Bluffton since then, my entire life for 23 years now, I've seen the growth happen there. A lot has changed since 2006. A lot has changed in the last five or six years. Just because something was passed back then doesn't mean it's the right decision today. The decisions were made to create the other part of the Bluffton Parkway, and development has happened around that area. We know this connection, which is really only about 1.1 miles from the other road connecting right now, and we know where it goes through. We won't get bogged down into that. But I can tell you that I've stood out against this from the beginning. The only time I would ever advocate for it is if you can actually tell us that it's going to go all the way to 95, which nobody can. We were just informed that the area that it was originally supposed to go through is sold off, so that even puts more hardship on that. As well as if you think we're throwing a fit in our area, imagine how much Sun City's going to throw a fit when they realize it's going through their backyard as well. With that said, just know that if this does pass today where we don't do the funding, know that this wasn't brought up by county council. Somebody else, either on the town of Bluffton or on LATS, is the one pushing for this to continue to come forward. I keep having people ask me, "Why is it back? Why is it back? Why is it back?" And I can tell you that nobody up here is bringing it forward. I've been very clear on that, that it will not be supported by me, and I know it's not supported by most people here on Bluffton or in the council. They've openly said that, there's no need for this road. So, I highly encourage you, after today is done, I hope the town of Bluffton hears us as well, that we do not want this road. We do not want it even studied to open up that option. All it's doing is raising concerns. So, after tonight, I guarantee you there will be a town of Bluffton meeting at some point, and I hope you voice your concerns there. I hope they're in the same agreement with us at the county. We can actually lay this to rest and finally be done with the 5B nonsense. So, thank you.[934.13][934.13](APPLAUSE).
Is there any other discussion?
And I would like to reiterate what Mr. Cunningham said, and I want to say kudos to Mr. Cunningham. On February 26th, when we sat up here and we talked about a resolution that was on the agenda, it was Mr. Cunningham that pointed out 5B was included in that. We took a vote, and unfortunately, we lost. Four of us voted, the rest did not. So, I just want to say kudos to Mr. Cunningham because if it wasn't for him, we probably wouldn't be sitting here today. That's my opinion.[975.51][975.51](APPLAUSE).
Is there any other?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do want to express that I did vote in favor of the inclusion of 5B, but we had a chat here in the same room, and citizens like you came forth and expressed your displeasure, and it opened my eyes to what I was doing. But even after I took the vote that night, I appreciate you coming, but I said to some representatives from council here who did not want 5B included. I hated voting for something because I'm representing north of the Broad, because I live north of the Broad. I don't even see south of the Broad unless I have to go for an emergency or whatever. But I voted against, well, I voted for it, and they voted against it, and I felt really out of place because they know better than I do. And I said at the time at the chat that I had second thoughts and that I will support their effort, and so I have retract my vote, and I will support, unusual for me to support Mr. Cunningham.[1062.13][1062.13](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Lawson?
Yes, let me say that I also had supported the past, and let me just try to clarify what we've talked about. I will support Mr. Cunningham's amendment that he has, again, to take 5B out. But I've been here for 35 years, however, so let me give you the flip side, that I've seen where we had 278 that needed widening, and there were people that were opposed to it. I've seen where people opposed the Bluffton Parkway. I've seen where people opposed the Bluffton Flyover. I've seen where people have opposed the Cross Island Expressway. So, again, those are all things in the past. So, I'm just saying this again, I'm supporting Mr. Cunningham's idea here to do this, to pull 5B out. But again, we need to look to the future and make sure that we're doing the right thing for all generations to come. I'm not going to be here forever, and again, I can't imagine ever voting for 5B, but again, I was voting for the study itself, for us to spend the money. And we might have found out in that study that 5B was not needed, and you could have won your case that way as well, but we have to find out what the study said. So, again, us moving forward during the studies, that's necessary, and backing out the portion of 5B, I think is a very smart way to do it, and let things happen from there. But again, we definitely need to have these studies done because we all know what's happening on traffic. We see how things are getting busier and busier on Bluffton Parkway and the Buckwalter Parkway, on 46, on 170, on 278. So, again, this is all things for the future that we're looking forward for the studies, and again, I'm happy to support, again, pulling out 5B from that study.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Just last thing I want to say on that is, the only way that could have happened is if you came out and did what you did. So, in the future, stay with us, stay engaged with what we're doing. We appreciate it.
Ms. Tabernick?
I just want to comment. Many of these people came to the chat with council, which convinced Mr. Glover, and I appreciate your understanding of that. He actually experienced our mess down at 170 on his way to Hilton Head one morning. So, I do appreciate his changing his view because all of you have communicated with council that this was not something you wanted. And this shows you council does listen to our constituents in the end. Not always, but today.[1208.51][1208.51](LAUGHTER).
Any other comments?[1211.15][1211.15](APPLAUSE). By the way, I have spoken to the officials in the town of Bluffton. They knew we were going to take this action this evening, and they
You can buy, Chairman.
Oh, they knew we were going to take this action this evening, and they understand why. Okay, any further comments? Seeing none. The amendment is to remove funding for 5B. This will be done without objection? And I see no objections. Okay, we're now back to the original motion, which is to do the study for one, two, and three without 5B. Is there any discussion about that?
I just wanted to say thank you to the rest of council for taking the time to look this over again, and I appreciate you guys' support.
Okay, this will be approved without objection. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item 17 is approved.[1275.58][1275.58](APPLAUSE). Do any of you wish to speak on the matter?[1289.92][1289.92](LAUGHTER). Yes, sir. Please state your name.
My name is Tony La Martena. I'm at Resident Rose Hill in Bluffton. Mr. Chairman, council, thank you for hearing me today. I want to go a little bit beyond just a study and talk about the overall direction that Bluffton is moving in. For 18 years, as you know, this 5B has been discussed. Even without the study, if 5B or another amendment brings it back to life again, the increase in traffic congestion, the destruction of wetland habitat, natural resources, and wildlife, disappearing green space, increased crime, noise, and light pollution, significant reduction in property value, and increased flooding due to changes in area drainage. The U.S. EPA Watershed Academy states, "A sub watershed with 10% to 25% impervious cover is classified as degraded. Any streams watershed having greater than 25% is classified as non-supporting with poor biological diversity and high-level bacteria levels." This is what I'm talking about going forward, even though 5B, the study's not there, and even though it may not be built, any building that we do converting pervious to impervious creates this problem. The Oka T River Watershed has 25% of land impermeable and is negatively impacting the biological condition of the tidal creeks. The Rose Dew Watershed, which is the runoff where this runoff will go, is already close to 25% and impacts the May River, the Colleton Fish Wildlife Oyster Beds and Shellfish, which is a great part of our economy. The town of Bluffton, and they'll do what they want to do, had a Parkway Bluffton 5B Alternatives was a paper they published. Of that, in the bullets, immediately improve economic development opportunities, immediately resolve unrealized real estate development, align intersections, and land roadways, which allows use of adjacent property. That's all for the benefit of developers, not for the residents of this area.
Right.[1444.15][1444.15](APPLAUSE).
The cost of 5B has talked about, there are additional areas to use $62 million. Some of it's been stated a little while ago. Resurface existing roads create more and longer stacking lines to move vehicles out of the traffic lanes. Paint the stop, edge, turn, and center lanes to improve visibility. These are three safety areas that exist today in all of our roads, and it needs to be fixed.
Thank you.
So, again, I appreciate the time to talk. I thank you, and I hope that we look forward.[1497.42][1497.42](APPLAUSE).
Can we get Tony that study?
I'm sorry.
Tony, can we get that study that you cited? Can you get that to Ms. Brock, please? And the only question I have is, Ms. Schaefer, do you agree with what Tony's talking about? I'm kidding. No, sorry about that.
We have time for one more. Anybody else? One more.
You enable me to condense this greatly.[1528.42][1528.42](LAUGHTER). Okay, the roadway improvements included in LATS, as you said, were intended to improve traffic flow, motor, pedestrian, and bicycle safety. 5B does none of those things. It actually opens for development hundreds of acres of property, which they want to then tie into 278, increasing traffic on 278 with additional curb cuts, and the commercial developments that are going to go in there along with residential developments are going to do nothing but add congestion at the very intersections that you're trying to cure. And it just needs to be off the table for that reason. You also need to look into, if it ever is offered to buy, you need to look into the inflated values that were put on those properties by phony zoning that, it's really not buildable at this point, but the zoning that was upzoning, then they get imparers to come in and say if this was done. We had that in Rose Hill happen to us, and they were convicted in tax court for fraud. So, there's nothing else you need to look at if we're ever offered the opportunity to buy that and take it out of development. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.[1600.92][1600.92](APPLAUSE). Thank all of you for coming out this evening, expressing your views on this. We have heard you. We have moved on, and we will go from there. Okay, we're going to go to item number 12 now, which is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance to amend Beaufort County's budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024, ordinance number 2023/2022, to appropriate and transfer $250,000 from fund balance -- Yeah, they're going out quietly. From fund balance to the general fund for the purchase of real property, I'm sorry, to budget, unbudgeted costs for the Fusky Island Ferry operations, and to appropriate and transfer $3,600,000 from fund balance to the general fund for the purchase of real property at 333 and 335 Buckwalter Parkway pursuant to ordinance 2023/14 to include three special revenue funds budgets, funds 2230, 2252, and 2255, in an aggregate amount of $402,918, which were converted to the general fund during the chart of accounts conversion process. Total amendment of the budget ordinance 2023/2022 is $4,252,918. May I have such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tabernick makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. McKellen makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be adopted without objection, and I see no objections. By the way, is there anybody in the public who wishes to address this item? Thank you. Seeing none. Item number 13 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 66 Taxation, Article 5 Hospitality Tax of the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. Such a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tabernick?
I'll make the second.
Ms. Howard? Is there anybody from the public wishes to address this item? Seeing none, is there anybody on council? Seeing none, this item will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 14 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 66 Taxation, Article 2, Accommodations Tax Board Division 1 Generally and Division 2 Accommodations 3% Tax. May I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion again.
Ms. Tabernick?
I'll second that.
Ms. Brown? Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there anybody in the public wishes to make a comment about this? Seeing none, is there anybody on council?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote against this one. Probably a long one, but I'm going to vote against it.
This will be done with the one objection. Is there any other objection? Seeing none, it is adopted with one objection. Seeing none, it is adopted with one objection. Number 15 is a second reading of an ordinance appropriating funds from the state ATAX funds as recommended by the state ATAX committee in compliance with the requirements of the South Carolina Code of Laws. Such a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lawson. Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Glover, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll vote against this one as well, please.
Seeing no other discussion, this will be approved with one objection. Is there any other objection? Then it is approved with one objection. 16 is the approval of a resolution authorizing the interim county administrator to execute the documents necessary and to provide funds to contribute to the procurement of a conservation easement on several parcels of real property located in Jasper County known collectively as the Gregory Neck. May I have such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Howard made the motion. Mr. Bartholomew made the second. It is duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Chairman, I go after.
You, I recognize you first.
Yes, thank you, sir. I don't have any comments. I'm glad we're doing this. I just want to acknowledge Colonel, I met you at the committee meeting when you addressed the committee. That's, that's all.
Anyone else?
Yeah, briefly. I just want to say we pushed forward on this green space referendum. It had never been done before. We put together a team to find people to be on the board, and then that board was, the committee was set out to even create guidelines and operations, because there's nothing to go by. It was all a clean slate. I just want to congratulate them, that you guys did an absolutely fantastic job. One of the things that we challenged you guys with was tripling or quadrupling the money that we took in for taxpayers, and this is exactly how to do that. That's something way above my head, and I'm glad that you guys are able to get that done. So I appreciate you guys and the committee as well.
Mr. Chairman.
That's taxpayer dollars doing right.
Ms. Howard.
I'd just like to thank Tim, who's sitting in the back, and Mark Davis and Julianne staff for all the hard work they did to get us, Tim's on the committee, and Mark and Julianne with Planning Department, Mark Davis and Julianne Smith, I need to use your last names, all the hard work you did, and also Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort and the Open Land Trust for applying for this money, and like Councilman Cunningham, you know, you can't get a better return on your money than this project. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes, and let me just say when we were debating the one cent green space, we talked about not allowing money raised in Beaufort County to go for anyplace else other than Beaufort County, and it's something that we've discussed over and over again. We decided that we'd leave it in there, that this money would be used and, and used on a select basis to do something just like this. This is exactly what we need to do. So again, this is money that is actually being raised by Beaufort County taxpayers. It is being used to help purchase a piece of property that is at our headwaters on Broad River. It is 4,000, excuse me, 4,400 acres that we are preserving, and again, we are, we are a small contributor to this amount, but again, this is exactly what the Green Space Program was meant to do and was meant to happen. And again, I was probably one of those folks that was against it being spent outside of Beaufort County, but again, I'm glad that I changed, we changed our mind and decided to include that.
Mr. Chairman.
I want to commend Kate Schaefer. I like this a lot, and you did the three reasons why does it matter? Maybe you could give one to every council member?
Now that it passed your test.
Okay. Well, I didn't check it for grammar. Leave that alone. But one of the things I said to the Green Space Committee when they first met, I said we have to educate, because people are going to complain, why are you spending it in Jasper County? So I appreciate the education part, and Mike McShane did it, Mr. Evans did it, Ms. Howard does it at her opportunity. This is really a good flyer. Thank you.
Is there anyone else before I go to Mr. Glover?
Yeah, before the vote, I do want to acknowledge, even though this is in Jasper County, it's really Beaufort County as well because of the Broad River, and we're protecting 13 miles, I believe, of the river. That's a lot of protection for the Saint Hel, I mean, Port Royal Sound. Two major sounds in Beaufort, Saint Helena, we're trying to keep clean, pristine, and we need to clean up Port Royal Sound. This will help do that.
Any final comments? Truly, this is Beaufort County making the impossible possible. Green space is something that people said can't happen. Rural and Critical Lands can't happen. Beaufort County has done that. We have now done something special. So item 16 will be approved without objection. I see no objections. Congratulations to all of those involved. Item number 18 is approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority for the construction and installation of the Lubiko Morgan Road Waterline Project, IGA, with BJWSA for design and construction of a water line to service the Lubiko Community Waterline to be installed on Morgan Road between Trask Parkway and John Meek Way.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer that motion on behalf of Mr. Dawson, who's not here.
Mr. Glover made the motion, Ms. Howard made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say I think this project will benefit the community and also will benefit economically in that area for
Absolutely.
many reasons.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, this will be passed without objection, and I see no objections. Item 19 is approval of a resolution authorizing the interim county administrator to accept a grant from the South Carolina Department of Agriculture in the amount of $500,000 for the repair and construction of a commercial dock and upgrading of existing processing and grading buildings at Gay Fish Company. May I have such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Glover made the motion. Mr. Bartholomew made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Chairman, I just want to say that this is going to help enhance and continue to enhance fishing industry in that, in that area.
Yep, this is economic development.
Yes, it is.
Any other comments? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 20, approval of a resolution authorizing the interim county administrator to approve an affordable housing fee subsidy in the amount of $11,765 requested by Low Country Habitat for Humanity for the construction of three affordable residential units in northern Beaufort County. Mr. Bartholomew.
Go ahead.
100 people seconded, and I didn't know who was first. Ms. Howard? Okay, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and there is no objection. Item 21, recommend the appointment of Thomas Mike Senior to the Beaufort Jasper Sewer Water Authority Board. A motion.
I'll make that. I'll make the motion.
Mr. Lawson.
I'll second.
Ms. Tabernick, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Chairman, no discussion.
Yes.
Just want to let you know that I will be voting in opposition.
Fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? This will be approved with two objections. Seeing that, it is approved, and the gentleman is here, Thomas Mike Senior. Will you please stand? Thank you, sir. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to make a comment? Yes, ma'am? Please come up and state your name.
Joy Coe. This is about 5B. I didn't get to speak, so I just wanted to speak. So I would like to thank county councilwoman Paula Brown for listening to our constituents and making a motion at the last county council meeting to reopen the resolution concerning the funding of 5B. I would also like to thank all the other county council members who unanimously voted to reopen this resolution. The original purpose of this road was to reduce congestion and provide system reliability per the 2024 TIP, which is the Transportation Implementation Program. However, the Phase 5B roadway will only increase congestion with all the commercial development which is slated to be done along this road. System reliability is also no longer viable as the connection from Highway 170 to I-95 is not going to be the case now for Mr. Passamit at the February 26 council meeting. I also want to speak on behalf of the wildlife, who don't have a voice in this matter. The town's insatiable lust for development has driven most of the animals away from their habitats, and their numbers are rapidly dwindling as a result. The Phase 5B area is one of the last strongholds that they have left in the greater Bluffton area. Please don't allow this road, as we have no wildlife, will have no wildlife left, if the town of Bluffton has their way. After all, the wildlife is one of the primary reasons that many people move here in the first place. Last, hats off to the five county council members, Mr. Glover, Mrs. Mr. Dawson, Ms. Howard, Ms. Tabernick, and Ms. Barthol, Mr. Mathol, sorry, Bartholomew, who attended the Q and A meeting on Thursday, February 29, to listen to and discuss their citizens' concern. The meeting was very informative, and I hope that there are more of these type meetings in the future. I want to personally thank Mr. Glover, Mr. Bartholomew, and Mr. Dawson, who said they would change their vote and vote to remove Phase 5B if the three studies were separated. I also hope all of you will go one step further and remove BL-02 and BL-01 from the 2004 Transportation Implementation Program. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, and no further action to come before county council, this meeting is adjourned.
Chairman, that was pretty good.
Very good. We got through it. Sebastian, how are you?
Thank everybody. Congratulations.
Oh.